Good evening and welcome to the March tenth meeting of the Florissant City Council. Would you please join and rise me in a pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk, would you please take the role?
Shildroff.
Here.
Stinnett.
Here.
Pagano.
Yes.
Schmidt.
Here.
Hernandez. Lee.
Here.
Gribb.
Here.
Egan.
Here.
Caputa.
Here.
Seeing we have a quorum, I call this meeting in order. Next on the agenda is approval of minutes. First, we have our meeting on executive minutes of February fourteenth. Are there any corrections or additions? Mr. Hernandez moves for approval. Mr. Lee seconds that. All those in favor?
Aye.
Next on the agenda, special minute, meeting minutes of February eighteenth. Are there any additions or corrections? Mr. Schmidt moves for approval, taken by Mr. Gribb. All those in favor?
Aye.
Finally, our work session minutes from February twenty-seventh. Are there any additions or corrections? Ms. Pagano moves for approval, seconded by Mr. Egan. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Next on the agenda, we have hearing from citizens. First one I have is Mr. Dave Woodruff. Come on up, sir.
I'm just here to, uh, I think you guys are gonna take over the golf course in Florissant, and I think that's a good thing because the last two or three years I've been telling all them guys up there, "Man, I'd be glad if Florissant could ever take this over." And it seems to me like you guys are doing that, and I just wanna thank yous for that. The new golf carts, I think, you might be getting, I'm not sure, but that's something good. And as long as everybody does their job, I talk to them up there. I have tournaments up there once a year. I go to the police officers tournament, and so if you need any help with anything, you got my name and number, I can help yous out. But I think them people up there do a good job. It's just a matter of you guys taking it over. So, I appreciate you guys finally doing that. And if I have any problems, I'll talk to the manager up there, alright? Thanks a lot.
Thank you, Mr. Woodruff. Next, we have Mr. Tim Jones.
How's everybody doing tonight? Good to see you guys. Uh, Tim Jones, eight-six-five, Daniel Boone, Florissant. Uh, I'm a taxpaying citizen, just like everybody up on the board here. I went to the political bash that you guys threw at the JFK Center with the taxpayer-funded money. Uh, some things happened in there that I was not very happy about. Uh, I was verbally assaulted by you, Mr. Shildroff, Joe, you, and Tim you. I do expect an apology how you guys acted, and this is terrible to see how you guys folded under pressure because I gave these flowers out here, right here. These are the big flowers that you called the police on me for, Keith, and I want all everybody in the public to see, these flowers are very dangerous. So, don't sell or give flowers out to your community in the city of Florissant because the council members might get you arrested, you guys. The police then came and asked what I was doing. You guys said I was giving out a political card. Here's the card. Compliments of Tim Jones. Save the spring dates. Let's see, we got the Shamrock Ball, we got the baseball season. Uh, if any of you guys wanna see this, I'm gonna leave this right on the city attorney's desk. You guys are more welcome to come see the dangerous flower, and my political card, it says the dates for the baseball game, everybody. Some of you guys ought to be ashamed how you acted the other day. I'm not running against you guys, I'm running against John Gribb. And John, if you sent these guys out to act like thugs, they sure did a good job. I thought that was terrible, John, and you should've said something to them too, John. I have never acted like this to none of you people, and I don't expect it to act like that to me. Thank you very much.
Next on the agenda, excuse me, next up, we have Jerry Zeller.
My name is Jerry Zeller. I live at sixteen ninety-five Mark Twain Drive, Florissant, Missouri. Uh, to start off with, I wanna thank Joe Egan for working three days at Saint Ferdinand, Saint Ferdinand for the barbecue. It was very good. It went over very well. Thanks again, Joe, for taking all the time. The other reason I'm up here is I got the newspaper here, the independent news here. On page three, this was processed on Thursday, March the sixth. It was five days after that meeting up at the Egan Center was. Now, the thing that I look at here is, I've been at the council meetings here, and I know, two times, Mr. Lee made it a point about the meeting on March the first, two thousand fourteen. At the council meeting and stating that everyone was welcome, including you, Mayor Snyder. Twice has happened at a council meeting, and you were sitting there, and he invited anybody in any other ward to come there that day. Now, if I would forget and say that I did not remember and anybody didn't tell me something, and I would tell my wife this, and on the day that it was going to happen, I still said, "Nobody called me," she would take me to the doctor, and she would find out if I had a senior moment, if I was getting Alzheimer's or dementia. Now, if you stated you weren't asked to attend, then why did you show up that day? Because I don't go anywhere and just go in and think there's a basketball game when I don't know that there is one. Now, there's something wrong there. Now, it sounds like you're trying to put some people under the bus because of saying that you did not know anything about it when they directly said twice that it was on March the first, hot dogs and soft drinks would be served. Now, a couple people in our neighborhood went to it, and they were really surprised. They thought, "Hey, it was nice, the councilmen were there," but they also was concerned, and they said that, "How come the department heads were not allowed in the gym for questions to be answered to them, such as the policeman, the street department, and stuff like that?" Now, I just feel as though that when you were told here and cards were sent out to every household, to the occupancy of the house, you did know about it, that that meeting was going on. Now, I guess the thing I look at, if you were my son and you denied that I told him something, I would send him to the room.
Mr. Zeller, unfortunately, I'm sorry, your three minutes is up. I'm sorry. Apologize.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time. Next, we have Mr. Mark Bellman.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'm Mark Bellman, seven-six-eight Charverne Road. Thank you very much for allowing me to speak. Um, I'm gonna start off a little bit different than the previous two speakers. I'm gonna start off thanking the wonderful city of Florissant. I'm gonna thank the Public Works Department and their wonderful team of inspectors. I wanna thank the Police Department and their code enforcement inspectors, and most importantly, I wanna thank the mayor for doing such a wonderful job. And I wanna point out just a couple of the sections of your code book. In section four-oh-five dash oh-three-five, specifically talks about signs and what describes a sign. Then, I would like to point out in chapter five-twenty, section five-twenty dash oh-two-zero, okay, and that has to deal with signs, and more importantly, paragraph five, about the political signs. Now, as I said, I wanna say thank you. If you recall, last year or the year before, there was a political sign down at BJ's Tavern, and that sign was an illegal sign. And finally, those people were forced to deal with an illegal sign. Somebody from the city of Florissant forced them to deal with that illegal sign. But have you realized how many illegal signs are up currently, right now, throughout the city of Florissant? And I thank you, Mayor, I thank you for that. I wanna revert back to two thousand and eleven. Here's my ticket, ladies and gentlemen. It's a ticket from the city of Florissant that was issued to me for an illegal political sign that I had to deal with that day of the election. Correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Egan, I think you were a witness to this type of thing, of me getting a ticket. I went to court for that ticket. Now, the prosecutor dealt with that ticket. I came up here to the city of Florissant, extended my hand to the mayor. For a handshake, I would've forgot about it, but that handshake didn't happen. But that's okay. I went to court, and I paid my court cost, and that's okay. I am delighted, delighted, that the city of Florissant and their inspectors are not enforcing these laws. I'm delighted, I'm happy, because it's gonna make my campaign a lot easier next year, ladies and gentlemen. So, thank you for not supporting these sign ordinances that you guys have, because you've got a precedent set, and that opens the door for me. Thank each and every one of you. Thank you, Mayor.
Mr. Egan?
Thank you, Mr. Shildroff. Uh, for the record, I remember the conversation I had with Mr. Jones on the morning of the meet and greet or the afternoon as being cordial. I don't remember the situation, he described it, but I understand that perception's reality. I am very proud that we had a good turnout from the people on Ward Three that came up and I got to exchange ideas with and shake their hand and hear some of their concerns. I think it was a good event, and I look forward to doing it next year. But again, I don't recall the, um, the situation as been described to the people. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Egan. Mr. Lee?
Yeah, Mr. Jones, if you feel I did anything to offend you, I will apologize to you publicly now. It was not my intent to offend you, and I just wanted to make sure there wasn't political things going on. And I, and if you recall, I tried to look at your card, and you told me to keep my hands off of it and so forth. So, I tried to talk civilly to you. I, and so, I will apologize to you if I did anything to offend you. It was not my intent. And you stood up there, I believe, for the whole time and continued to hand out your flowers and your flyers, and no one had any objection to doing that. We were just concerned. This was a, uh, was a non-political event. It's something that we did. All nine council people were there and participated. We know, we knew it was doing. It was the same thing that was done in the, in the summer for the other groups, and so, I apologize if you took offense by that. I got nothing but positive comments. You're the only person I've heard that's had a negative comment about what we did. But again, I will apologize to you if I did anything to offend you. It was not, never my intent either.
Thank you, Mr. Lee. Mr. Jones, I'll apologize to you too. I begged you to come inside, just not to politic. That's all I did. I said, "Come on in, have a soda, have some lemonade, have a hot dog." I begged you to come in. I find it kinda ironic that two other candidates who are running didn't chose this, choose this avenue to do things the way you did. I asked you to please come in, but please not politic. I could've bent over backwards anymore. And if you feel offended, I apologize, Mr. Egan and I, we talked about it, and I did call the police, sure I did, 'cause I didn't want any politic going up there. It was a ward meeting. It was not a candidate issue. And if you feel offended, for the record, I apologize. I, you know, if you wanna apologize to me afterwards for what you said to me, that I'm not gonna say in this public forum, 'cause of decorum, I'm not gonna do that. But I'll just leave it at that. Thank you. Next on the agenda, we have communications.
Email dated February twenty-fifth from Kevin O'Donnell regarding FCTV streaming video. Email dated March fifth from Pamela Lee regarding prudent spending of tax dollars. Letter dated February twenty-fifth from Rebecca Zoll with North County Incorporated regarding support of the grant for the replacement of St. Anthony Lane Bridge over Fountain Creek. Letter dated February twenty-fifth from Rebecca Zoll, North County Incorporated regarding support of the grant for old-time street and stormwater improvements. Letter dated February twenty-fifth from Rebecca Zoll, North County Incorporated regarding support of the grant for the replacement of the pedestrian signal on Dirhockey Road at Robinwood Elementary.
Next on the agenda, we have public hearings. Public hearing fourteen dash oh-three dash zero-zero-eight.
In accordance with section four-oh-five-three-ten of the Florissant zoning code, a public hearing will be held by the City Council of Florissant, Missouri, in Council Chambers, nine fifty-five Route Saint Francois, on Monday, March tenth, two thousand fourteen, at seven P.M. on the following proposition: To authorize a special use permit to Cross Keys Restaurant Group, LLC, DBA Burger King, to allow for the existing operation of a sit-down, carry-out, and drive-through restaurant for the property located at thirty-one twenty-one North Highway sixty-seven. Citizens will have an opportunity to be heard. Anyone with special needs should contact the city clerk at least five days before said public hearing by calling eight-three-nine-seven-six-three-oh or TDD eight-three-nine forty-one, fifty-one forty-two.
Mr. James Brinkmeyer?
Mr. Mayor, the council, city council, good evening. Thanks for ordering the nice weather. Uh, I'm Jim Brinkmeyer. I'm the managing owner of Cross Keys Restaurant Group, LLC. Uh, we acquired this restaurant along with a few others from the previous owner who operated and owned these restaurants for about thirty to thirty-seven years in the area. Uh, we do operate another restaurant in the city of Florissant, um, off of Lindbergh Boulevard. When we acquired this store, it came to my attention that this, evidently, the location where this restaurant lies was annexed from St. Louis County some time ago. And since it was occupied and operated by the previous owner, uh, he was grandfathered in, if you will, under special use permit clauses by the city of Florissant. Uh, with our acquisition, we're, uh, have gone through city planning and zoning and so on, and I'm here today to plead our case to continue operating the restaurant as we have for the past many years, not myself in particular. But I did bring Ms. Charlene Vossenkemper with me. Uh, she's a, a previous manager of that facility, and she is our director of operations for all of our restaurants today, uh, to answer any detailed questions you might have. But essentially, in, in just layman's terms, uh, this restaurant really hasn't changed greatly in the last fifteen, twenty years. I believe it was remodeled about fifteen years ago, complying with, with city ordinance, county ordinance, and so on. Uh, we continue to do so, uh, and will hopefully continue in the future with your blessing. So, we're here today to plead that. If anyone has any questions, I'd gladly be able to address those.
Mr. Hernandez?
Good evening, and thank you for coming up, and nice talking to you.
Thank you, Mr. Hernandez.
I did send an email to the rest of the council members regarding your issue and mentioned to them the fact that if it just, the daily, daily normal operation is gonna change, and it's just special use permit, but like you said, it was grandfathered in years ago. Um, so, I request three readings for this evening, so I hope we'll get the approval of the rest of the council to make that happen for you this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hernandez. Mr. Lee?
Yes, I would, I would be remiss if I didn't ask on behalf of my granddaughter, "You're not gonna close the playground place, are ya?" Because she loves playing up there, and I like it because I can sit in the quiet side and watch her, so, so, that's not gonna change? Alright, thank you.
Mr. Lee? Anyone else on council? Before I close this public hearing, or is anyone attendance wishes to speak on this?
Mr. Mayor? Do you have any watchers with you? I don't, but we can make some appear.
Mr. Hernandez moves to close the public hearing, seconded by Mr. Egan. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Next on the agenda, we have old business, second readings. Before I read Bill eighty-nine-seventy-six, I'd like to make this statement for the public. This bill and Bill eighty-nine-seventy-nine are being replaced with a newly combined bill, number eighty-nine-eighty-one. Procedurally, the council needs to finish the voting process on these bills in order to introduce a replacement bill. So, now, Bill eighty-nine-seventy-six.
Any, all those in favor?
All those in favor? Aye. Opposed?
Now, you may motion for a third.
I will make a motion for a third. Seconded by Mr. Stinnett.
An ordinance appropriating the sum of forty-two thousand from the, from the Park Improvement Fund to account number oh-nine-six-five, Professional Services, for the purpose of securing a golf cart lease for the golf course.
Before the final vote is taken, or is anyone who attends who wishes to speak on this? Clerk, please poll the council for the final vote.
Shildroff?
No.
Stinnett?
No.
Pagano?
No.
Schmidt?
No.
Hernandez?
No.
Lee?
No.
Gribb?
No.
Egan?
No.
Caputa?
No.
Bill eighty-nine-seventy-six fails. Next on the agenda, we have Bill eighty-nine-seventy-eight. Mr. Camuta moves for a second reading, seconded by Mr. Schmidt. All those in favor?
Aye.
An ordinance authorizing a special use permit to Star United LLC DBA Phillips Sixty-Six to allow for the operation of a gas station and convenience store for the property located at twenty-twenty Patterson Road.
Mr. Caputa moves for a third, seconded by Ms. Pagano.
All those in favor?
All those in favor?
Aye.
An ordinance authorizing a special use permit to Star United LLC DBA Phillips Sixty-Six to allow for the operation of a gas station and convenience store for the property located at twenty-twenty Patterson Road.
Before the final vote is taken, or is anyone who attends who wishes to speak on this? Seeing none, clerk, please poll the council for the final vote.
Shildroff?
Yes.
Stinnett?
Yes.
Pagano?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Gribb?
Yes.
Egan?
Yes.
Caputa?
Bill eighty-nine-seventy-eight becomes ordinance number eighty-twenty-eight. Next on the agenda, we have Bill eighty-nine-seventy-nine.
So-and-so moves. Somebody moves.
I'll move for a second, seconded by Mr. Egan. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
An ordinance appropriating the sum of one-hundred-and-fifty-six thousand from the General Revenue Fund to account zero-one-five-zero-six-sixty-one thousand capital additions for the purchase of various pieces of equipment for the golf course.
I'll move for a third, seconded by Ms. Pagano. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
An ordinance appropriating the sum of one-hundred-and-fifty-six thousand from the General Revenue Fund to account number zero-one-five-zero-six-sixty-one thousand capital additions for the purchase of various pieces of equipment for the golf course.
Before the final vote is taken, is there anyone who attends who wishes to speak on this? Seeing none, clerk, please poll the council for the final vote.
Shildroff?
No.
Stinnett?
No.
Pagano?
No.
Schmidt?
No.
Hernandez?
No.
Lee?
No.
Gribb?
No.
Egan?
No.
Caputa?
No.
Bill eighty-nine-seventy-nine fails. Next on the agenda, we have new business, board appointments. Mr. Lee?
I would like to move to reappoint Mary Pat Outlaw to the Citizens Participation Committee.
I'll move for approval, seconded by Mr. Stinnett. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, Mr. Lee. Mr. Mayor? Anyone else? Okay. Next on the agenda, we have resolutions. Resolution E-nine-sixty-nine.
Resolution of the mayor and city council.
Resolution of the mayor and city council of Florissant, Missouri, requesting the United States Congress to transfer the authority of the remediation of the Westlake landfill from the EPA to the Army Corps of Engineers, F U S R A P.
Mr. Stinett?
I would like to make a comment on this before we hopefully approve this resolution. The Army, or the Westlake landfill, the transfer of it, the EPA today has the authority over it. Hopefully, we're going to, in the very near future, see the Corps of Engineers assume responsibility of this. The other cleanups that have gone on in Hazelwood, over through the airport, and all, have all been under the responsibility, the authority, of the Army Corps of Engineers. And I think it would be to the citizens of North County's advantage to have the Corps of Engineers assume the responsibility. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stinett. Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, I'd just like to recognize and thank our city engineer, Tim Barrett, for his review, his diligent review of the situation, and the assistance that he gave to the city to present a position paper last year, and for his review of this issue currently. I have every reason to believe that it was the position paper prepared by Mr. Barrett that postponed the EPA from making their final determination and caused them to take a timeout and do more due diligence on this particular issue. And I just want to thank Mr. Barrett for his, using his professional expertise to help us with this resolution, and for Florissant to be a leader in trying to get the right decision made on this, on this very, very important, long-lasting issue.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll move for a second. Second by Mr. Egan. All those in favor? Aye.
Resolution of the mayor and city council of Florissant, Missouri, requesting the United States Congress to transfer the authority for the remediation of the Westlake landfill from the EPA to the Army Corps of Engineers, F U S R A P.
Mr. Caputa moves for a third. Second by Ms. Pagano. All those in favor? Aye.
We have to poll the council.
Poll the council, sorry.
Shuldorff?
Yes.
Stinett?
Yes.
Pagano?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Grib?
Yes.
Egan?
Yes.
Caputa?
Yes.
Resolution of the mayor and city council of Florissant, Missouri, requesting the United States Congress to transfer the authority of the remediation of Westlake landfill from the EPA to the Army Corps of Engineers.
Before this resolution passes, is there anyone who wishes to speak on this?
Yeah, I do have a question if you want to.
Can you come to the podium, please?
I'm just curious. I just, all right, I saw this. I just, is Bridgeston and Hazelwood who are really concerned with that, are they involved in this also? Because they, I work right across the road from the landfill till a couple of years ago. Now, are they in league with you or not? Are we just doing this show and tell, or?
Mr. Mayor?
Well, Florissant has over 52,000 citizens in the metropolitan area here, and we feel that the, it's not just the city of Florissant, it's St. Louis County municipally, it's the entire metropolitan area has our stakeholders in this issue. So, we're voicing our opinion as our other jurisdictions.
Well, but Hazelwood and Bridgeston, Bridgeston is right there by it, I mean, as far as that. Are they, have you talked?
I've been in conversation with Mayor Bowers, and he appreciates this, our weighing in on this.
Are they on board within, they want to transfer this then also to the Army Corps?
To my knowledge, we're on the same page with Mayor Bowers and Bridgeston.
Hazelwood also, I'm assuming? Because they're right, they're right down, they come, their border is right there by 370.
You'll have to ask Mr. Robinson, Mayor Robinson.
Okay. I mean, because we don't really touch it. I know it can affect it, but we don't really touch that, and that's primarily there. Bridgeston and Hazelwood, I would think, would be the most likely. But, I mean, it's, doesn't carry any weight, obviously. I mean, we're just doing this ad weight to the overall voice of North County, supposedly?
There's a worst-case scenario that's going to affect the entire metropolitan area, sir.
Okay, well, I mean, they're going to make the final decision, though. This is just our opinion, more or less, correct?
Yes, it is. It's our suggestion and opinion, yes.
There were orders, I worked right across on the Rock Road there for, till about a year and a half ago, but I knew it was Bridgeston, I just wondered why Florissant was getting involved. As long as you're in league with them, fine, but, so, wait, but there should be others, I'm assuming.
There will be.
Probably and Incorporated out there also, correct?
I'm sure, I'm sure there will be.
Okay, so, I need to say.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Clerk, please poll the council for the final vote on the resolution.
Shuldorff?
Yes.
Stinett?
Yes.
Pagano?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Grib?
Yes.
Egan?
Yes.
Caputa?
Yes.
Resolution 969 passes. Thank you. Next on the agenda, we have requests in Ward 6, a request for a beer and wine liquor license for duly's. Florissant gifts for the property located at 690 Route St. Francis. Could I have a roll call vote, please?
Shuldorff?
Yes.
Stinett?
Yes.
Pagano?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Grib?
Yes.
Egan?
Yes.
Caputa?
Yes.
Resolution 969 passes. Thank you. Next on the agenda, we have requests in Ward 6, a request for a beer and wine liquor license for duly's. Florissant gifts for the property located at 690 Route St. Francis. Could I have a roll call vote, please?
Shuldorff?
Yes.
Stinett?
Yes.
Pagano?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Grib?
Yes.
Egan?
Yes.
Caputa?
Yes.
An ordinance authorizing a special use permit to Cross Keys Restaurant Group, LLC, DBA Burger King, to allow for the existing operation of a sit-down, carry-out, and drive-through restaurant for the property located at 3121 North Highway 67.
Before the final vote is taken, is there anyone in attendance who wishes to speak on this? Seeing none, clerk, please poll the council for the final vote.
Shuldorff?
Yes.
Stinett?
Yes.
Pagano?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Grib?
Yes.
Egan?
Yes.
Caputa?
Yes.
Bill 8980 becomes ordinance number 8029. Didn't I use 28 before?
Okay.
Next on the agenda, we have ordinance E 8981.
An ordinance authorizing appropriations in the sum of $1,74,183 from the General Revenue Fund to various accounts.
I'll move for a second. Second by Mr. Lee, Mr. Schmidt.
Yeah, on the bill itself, now that it's on the floor, there seems to be some confusion, and I know I've had some conversations with administration, as well as some other council people. And at this time, I'd like to, unless somebody really wants to get into it, I'd just like to, at this time, amend this bill to remove Section Number 2. I think we can come to an agreement with administration. I think there can be a compromise here of what council, I think, is looking for, and I think what administration is looking for, without this verbiage in this bill. I just don't think it's necessary, although others may disagree, that's fine, but that's just the way I feel right now, that I don't, I don't think we really need this. I think we can come to a compromise without this verbiage in this bill. So, I would just like to offer that amendment to remove Section 2 of Bill 8981. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Schmidt. Mr. Stinett?
Well, I thought we'd put together a comprehensive plan that would cover, touch all the bases, and there was a great deal of concern about this being done fast enough. I guess if we want to take this back to another work session and take it back again, that's another two-week delay, but if that's where we want to go, I guess that's where we can go.
Mr. Lee?
If there's a motion on the floor, do we have a second on the motion before we discuss it? Because I, if there's not a second, then I will withhold comment.
I'll second.
Mr. Egan moves for a second for the purpose of discussion.
Okay.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
You know, I just, I just have some concerns, Mr. Schmidt. Out of all due respect that you do this the night of the meeting on the floor, we've had, we've had closed executive sessions, we've had work sessions, we even had an executive session tonight to discuss these issues, so I'm a little, I'm a little confused as to why suddenly this came up as a floor amendment tonight, which could end up creating problems. I mean, I thought we were all in agreement. We voted unanimously, everybody's name is on this bill. I don't think, I heard weeks ago confusion or concern that the council wanted to get involved in the bidding process, and I think there's nothing further from the truth. The council doesn't want to get involved in the bidding process. So, I will be against amending this bill to, to remove that section. If someone wanted to amend it, add some verbiage that says the council is not wanting to get involved in the bidding process, I don't have a problem with that amendment. But, but again, I'm, I'm a little taken back that you would wait until the night of the bill, after having all these meetings, and after having an executive session tonight to talk about golf course issues. I'm, I kind of feel blindsided by that. I don't know if that was your intent, but, you know, I would, I would not support, I will not support that amendment, so.
Mr. Egan?
You know, I, I understand the concerns of the administration, at least I think I do. I don't want to get involved in the bidding process. It's not my intent, and I don't know why, how we would word that, but the intent, my intent is not to become involved in the administration's bidding process. So, I don't know if there's a way to state that coherently, but my intent is not to hijack this from the administration.
Mr. Schmidt?
My intent's not to hold up the bill whatsoever. My intent was, is just to allow council and administration to come to a compromise without verbiage in this bill. If council so chooses not to do that, that's fine, that's, that's our prerogative. I just don't think we need verbiage in the bill to accomplish what we want to accomplish. I think we can get there without this, but, and that's fine. I have no problem. Majority always rules with this council, and I have no problem with that. I've never had a problem with that. So, my feelings will not be hurt.
Mr. Hernandez?
I think there's been enough time to review and discuss this issue for the last several weeks, a month, and I will not support any amendment to it as well.
Mr. Stinett?
I think we must keep in mind that we had a work session, the last work session when this bill was crafted, that the administration elected not to attend. And we start talking about a compromise, we come down to the night of a vote by the council, when we had opportunities to compromise, when we had opportunities to discuss. It seems like it's a little bit late in the game now to want to turn back and rewrite and recraft. I am not interested in trying to rush something through tonight. If we're going to recraft, it's something that's going to have to take a while, we're going to have to work our way through it. So, it appears to me that if we're going to offer up amendments, I'll tell you right off, I'm opposed to any amendments to the bill, and if that's where we're going to, well, we'll just take it back to the drawing board one more time. That's the only way I know to go.
Mr. Lee?
Yeah, and once again, for the record, I, I don't see anything in that paragraph that says we want to get involved in the bidding process. In fact, I read it quite to the contrary, that the council only wants to see final recommendations and review the final proposals, recommendations, negotiate agreements, and know what we're appropriating the money for. This is a sup, these are supplemental appropriations, and, you know, I think that that's smart on everybody's part to know what we're approving, you know, when we approve it, so. But, for the record, I don't want to get involved in the bidding process either. I don't want to overstep into the, into the position of where we're reviewing bids and recommendations. In fact, there's another bill on here tonight where we have a recommendation to go with a proposal that is not the low proposal. And because of the rationalization that was given as to why, I will support that. All I want to know is what we're doing and why, and go with the people's, you know, decisions, so.
Thank you, Mr. Lee. For the record, I, I'm going to echo many comments up here. I do not want to get in the bidding process either. I trust the administration, and, and Mayor Snyder's staff to come up with the lowest and most comprehensive and scopeful work, and then just pass that along to the council, say who they go with on various projects throughout the city. I do not want to get in that process. All those in favor for a second reading? Okay, is there, is there, there's a motion for the second. There is no.
I thought Egan already gave a motion.
You're making a motion for, to take that out, Mr. Egan, is that correct?
Say that again, please.
You're making a motion, seconding that, Mr. Schmidt's motion, to take that out of the bill, is that correct?
I'll second the, I'll second the motion to put it into the vote.
Oh, okay, so, there's no amendments on the floor?
Okay, there's no amendment on the floor?
That's what I'm asking, is there an amendment on the floor? Did you get a second?
I moved.
You moved to amend, okay.
No, second.
Okay. So.
I'm voting.
This is to keep the amendment in, correct?
Keep the amendment in.
Yes.
Yes. Stinett?
No, wait a minute, wait a minute, I want to be sure I understand what you're saying.
I'm not for striking the amendment, no.
The motion is to remove Section 2.
Well, that's a no vote, then.
Right, yeah, it's to remove.
You want to remove?
No, I don't.
Okay.
No.
Okay, Shuldorff is no.
No.
Stinett?
No.
Pagano?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Hernandez?
No.
Lee?
No.
Grib?
No.
Egan?
No.
And Caputa?
No.
Okay.
The motion fails. Now, we're second reading.
Right.
An ordinance authorizing appropriation in the sum of $1,74,183 from the General Revenue Fund to various accounts.
No, she just said we did, right?
Didn't we just vote on that?
Yeah, we just voted.
The amendment, okay. Motion for a second.
Correct.
All those in favor?
All those in favor? Aye.
An ordinance authorizing appropriation in the sum of one million seventy-four thousand one hundred and eighty-three dollars from the general revenue fund to various accounts.
Mr. Lee moves for a third. Second by Mr. Gribb.
Clerk, pull the council.
Please pull the council.
Shuldorff?
Yes.
Stenit? Pagano? Schmidt? Hernandez? Lee? Gribb? Egan? Caputa? An ordinance authorizing appropriations in the sum of one million seventy-four thousand one hundred and eighty-three dollars from the general revenue fund to various accounts.
Before the final vote is taken, is there anyone in attendance who wishes to speak on this? Seeing none, clerk, please pull the council for the final vote.
Shuldorff?
Yes.
Stenit? Pagano? Schmidt? Hernandez? Lee? Gribb? Egan? Caputa?
Bill eighty-nine eighty-one becomes ordinance number eighty-thirty. Correct?
Right.
Thank you. Next on the agenda, we have Bill E eighty-nine eighty-two.
An ordinance authorizing the city to purchase golf course equipment through the Iowa Department of Transportation State Bid.
I'll move for a second. Second by Mr. Hernandez.
All those in favor?
All those in favor? Aye.
An ordinance authorizing the city to purchase golf course equipment through the Iowa Department of Transportation State Bid.
Mr. Caputa moves for a third. Second by Ms. Pagano.
Shuldorff?
Clerk, please pull the council.
Sir?
Yes.
Stenit? Pagano? Schmidt? Hernandez? Lee? Gribb? Egan? Caputa?
An ordinance authorizing the city to purchase golf course equipment through the Iowa Department of Transportation Bid.
Before the final vote is taken, is there anyone in attendance who wishes to speak on this? Clerk, Mr. Lee, sorry.
I just want to thank the council, and I see Andy back there. Thank him for his hard work. I think we're getting a good deal, and as I said earlier, I think this is going to put some of our, some of the uncomfortable situation that we're in, giving those guys an opportunity to be successful and take those impediments that are out against them away from them. And I know there's been a lot of work. I thank the mayor and administration and the golf course staff for all their hard work on this, because, you know, I think we were able to save some money along the way and find a way to do this right away, which I think we all know is necessary. So, just want to thank everybody.
Thank you. Clerk, please pull the council for the final vote.
Shuldorff?
Yes.
Stenit? Pagano? Schmidt? Hernandez? Lee? Gribb? Egan? Caputa?
Bill E eighty-nine eighty-two becomes ordinance number eighty-thirty-one. I also would like to thank Mr. Hassel, Mr. Lee, and the mayor, his staff, Mr. Sprunt, and Mr. Gross for all their hard work they put in, the effort to keep our golf course running and keep it a top-flight place to play golf. Next on the agenda, we have Bill eighty-nine eighty-three.
An ordinance amending the general fund budget to reflect twenty-six thousand five hundred dollars from asset forfeiture funds in escrow to forfeiture revenue account zero-one-four-three-four-five-eleven, and to the forfeiture expenditure account zero-one-five-four-nine-sixty-one thousand for the purchase of various pieces of safety equipment and training for the police department.
Mr. Egan moves for a second. Second by Mr. Schmidt. All those in favor? Aye.
An ordinance amending the general fund budget to reflect twenty-six thousand five hundred from the asset forfeiture funds to escrow, in escrow, to forfeiture revenue account zero-one-four-three-four-five-eleven, and to the forfeiture expenditure account zero-one-five-four-nine-sixty-one thousand for the purchase of various pieces of safety equipment and training for the police department.
Mr. Egan moves for a third. Second by Mr. Caputa. Clerk, please pull the council.
Shuldorff?
Yes.
Stenit? Pagano? Schmidt? Hernandez? Lee? Gribb? Egan? Caputa?
An ordinance amending the general fund budget to reflect twenty-six thousand five hundred dollars from the asset forfeiture funds in escrow to forfeiture revenue account zero-one-four-three-four-five-eleven, and to the forfeiture expenditure account zero-one-five-four-nine-sixty-one thousand for the purchase of various pieces of safety equipment and training for the police department.
Before the final vote is taken, is there anyone in attendance who wishes to speak on this? Seeing none, clerk, please pull the council for the final vote.
Shuldorff?
Yes.
Stenit? Pagano? Schmidt? Hernandez? Lee? Gribb? Egan? Caputa?
Bill eighty-nine ninety, excuse me, eighty-three becomes ordinance number eighty-thirty-two, and I'm sure the chief and the entire police department thanks us for the three readings on this bill tonight. Next on the agenda, we have council announcements. Mr. Lee?
Yeah, I just wanted to thank Karen Goodwin and all the people that were involved in the Mayor's Ball, the Mayor Shamrock Ball. Several of us had an opportunity to attend, and it was a sold-out event. The proceeds of this event went to Valley Industries. It's the seventh annual event, and I, for one, had an outstanding time. I think all of us did, and just kudos to all the people, and Delmar Gardens for hosting it, all the sponsors. I'll forget all of who it did, but the food sponsors and everybody else. It was really, really a great event and for a great cause, and I think we've already got a preview of the price. Ticket prices are going up next year, right, Mayor?
Yeah, I think they're going up twenty-five dollars a person.
Okay, so, we'll get our tickets early, because we're also adding the City of Belphon Neighbors, so I think tickets will sell out even faster this year. So, we all want to get our tickets early. So, thank you.
Mr. Lee? Mr. Egan?
Thank you. As Mr. Zell referred to earlier, the St. Ferdinand's Athletic Association is running our annual barbecue and basketball tournament. The tournament actually starts next Saturday and Sunday, and will run for the following four weeks at some great championship basketball among third, fourth, and fifth graders. The barbecue this year and basketball tournament will benefit Backstoppers, which is an organization that sees to the welfare of police officers and firefighters and first responders that are killed in the line of duty. We've also added a second beneficiary, which is Focus, and Focus is an organization that helps young men and women who are Marines and have returned from deployment and are struggling with being reintroduced into society. So, if you'll come up and see us the next four weekends, we would be very appreciative. I know the mayor had some barbecue, Mr. Shuldorff, and Mr. Gribb, and Mr. Lee, and I think Jerry, and Mark, and John, and even Kevin Olden, I don't think he's here tonight, and they all tell you it's very, very good barbecue. So, come see us next few weeks.
Thank you, Mr. Egan. Mr. Stenit?
Yes, I'd like to echo Mr. Lee's remarks concerning the Mayor's Ball, Valley Industries. As a trustee of Valley Industries, of course, it glads my heart that anytime you can have a turnout and the tickets are sold out, it's all for a good cause. And I would like to cover just a little bit of ground, back up a little bit, and talk about the meet-and-greet that was at the JFK Center. Even though it was criticized in some circles, the citizens that attended, I, to the most, as far as I know, were all very well pleased. It gives an ample opportunity to spend some time, quality time, with their councilperson. Ward meetings, strictly ward meetings, are much more formal affairs. This way, people could stay out and have a soda, a hot dog, or whatever. So, my thanks to all the citizens that made the effort to come out, and thanks to everyone that put the efforts into it to make it a really good day. And last but not least, a reminder that this weekend, I am going to Savannah, Georgia. Mary Helen's baby boy is going to get married this coming weekend, so... This will be the last of the herd, and he's going to take that poor young lady from Savannah all the way to Fairbanks, Alaska, so she's in for a treat. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stenit. Mr. Caputa?
Thank you, Mr. President. I would also like to congratulate Karen Goodwin also for putting on that excellent Mayor's Ball. There were several people there out in the audience that were also, and I think we all had a good time there. If you didn't have a good time, I think it was your own fault. So, thank you, Mayor, and it was a very nice event. And also, I'd like to say, speaking of the West Lake and Coldwater Creek, they just started doing tests on it for the radioactive material from Duchaine Park to St. Dennis Bridge. So, that started last week. We won't be, we won't get the results for a while, but hopefully they won't find no contamination in the creek. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Caputa. I also would like to thank Mayor Schneider's, excuse me, Mayor Schneider, Robinson, McCourt, and Knowles for hosting a great Mayor's Ball, and to Karen Goodwin and all the sponsors. I had a fantastic time. I would also like to welcome Congressman Lacy Clay to Florissant. He opened his North County office on Graham Road at the First Bank Building recently, and I had the good opportunity last Wednesday to meet with staffer Sandy Houston and Mr. Ahmad Ishmael Latif, who will be staffing the office. It's at twelve-one-two-eight-one Graham Road, and they'll be in the office from nine AM to five, Monday through Friday, and their phone number is three-eight-three-five-two-forty. I'd like to thank the mayor for helping him get Congressman Clay to North County and to Florissant. In particular, Ward Five, because, you know, as I told Ms. Houston and Brother Ishmael, I said, you know, listen, you don't have to leave Ward Five, because, you know, you got Doozles, you got Helfers, you got BJ's, you got Yaks, you got all these great places in Ward Five. You don't even have to venture outside Ward Five, and you can have a great time. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. President. May, it's too bad Mr. Inglemeyer left, because I was going to thank him. He had some role in recruiting Congressman Clay. Actually, they're going to locate, at least for the moment, in the same building as Mr. Inglemeyer. So, I was going to publicly thank him for his efforts, but unfortunately, he likes to walk out right as I'm making my remarks, but that's his prerogative. I would also like to say that we're very happy to have Congressman Clay. This is their, they'll have, will be their only office in St. Louis County for the moment, and so we see his staff all the time. He has a staff member, Lou Abusi, who attends almost all the significant functions. He was at the Mayor's Ball, representing the congressmen, so the congressman does have good representation, and has a member of his staff very visible at all of our events here in North County. And North County Tech had a successful open house last week on March sixth. I visited there recently, and I was very impressed with North County Tech, even though it's not in Florissant, it touches Florissant, and I'm going to start treating it almost as if it is in Florissant, because it's one heck of an educational resource. And the truth of it cannot be any clearer than by looking at a couple photographs on the wall. You know, not everybody is going to college, so if you've got children that are not going to college, and they want to get a job right out of high school, they might want to think about going to North County Tech, because they've got pictures of some of the recent graduates that aren't even 20 years old yet, and they're fully employed, and they just bought their first Camaro or their first Mustang. And it's a real success story, and I'm just telling you that, you know, for working men and women, and the future working men and women, there's no better place to live than in Florissant, or Hazelwood, or Ferguson, or anywhere that's within close driving distance of North County Tech. I'm very proud of that school, and you're going to be hearing a lot more from me about that. And as you can tell from today's weather, and never mind the rumors about another snowstorm coming, winter is over, and I know it's over, because I have a picture of myself over at Fritz's Frozen Custard getting some of their product last week, and they are closed for the winter, and now they're open. Therefore, winter is over. Now, Baskin Robbins, and Doozles, and Cold Stone Creamery, they're open all year round, so I don't want to leave them out either. They're all good treats. So, get out, get out of the cabin, and go get some treats and eats, and go shopping. And last Friday night, we had the fourth leg of our Dare events. We have Project Liftoff. We've had that since nineteen-eighty-nine. We've had Splash Splash for over 20 years, and two years ago, we started the Halloween Bash, and this is our second annual ice-sponsored, it's a party on the ice sponsored by Dare and the Parks Department, and we had about 150 Dare-aged children there, and we had a ball. We had Officer Summers there, and we also had Parks Police Officer Lively and Foster, they were there, and we just had a really good time. So, we're going to keep doing those four events to promote Dare. And then, I also wanted to let you know that we have the sixth annual Confluence Trash Bash on March fifteenth. If you have any questions on that, contact City Engineer Tim Barrett. He's organizing this Trash Bash, and they're going to be cleaning out some creeks here in Florissant. They're going to meet at St. Ferdinand Park, and they're going to work on some creeks near Bangor. But contact City Engineer Tim Barrett for that. And there'll be a lunch to follow. So, they start at eight-thirty in the morning on that March fifteenth, and they will meet at Bangor Park. Sorry about that. And then, on the, we have the Nature Lodge. We're getting more and more usage of the Nature Lodge, and I'm happy to report that the World Bird Sanctuary will visit the Silver Awards Club. It's going to be at Sunset Park on March twentieth, and it's for seniors, and so they can sign up with the senior department, and just looking forward to having the World Bird Sanctuary back and for the Silver Awards Club. Also, the Knights of Columbus is having another food truck night. I think they're going to have three or four of them this year. Florissant's going to be cosponsoring these events, because the proceeds will be going to local charities such as Team. And we're going to be, we're going to have a collection of food barrels to collect food, non-perishable food for Team at this April twentieth event. The one they had, April twenty-third event, from five to eight PM at the Knights of Columbus grounds. The last one they had was really, really, really successful and a lot of fun, and Florissant residents are already looking forward to their next one. Lastly, just happy to report that the Cross Keys Management Company, Sandstone, signed up Dress Barn for sure. They're going to be coming to the shops across Keys, and they're going to occupy the space that was vacated by Deals. Very happy with that news. And as Mr. Caputa said, they are going to be testing some in Coldwater Creek, but according to Mr. Barrett, the last time they tested, they only found a little bit of radiation behind one of the abutments to the bridges, and hopefully that'll be the same, hopefully they'll have the same result this time with the testing. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Our next meeting is March twenty-fourth at seven PM in Council Chambers. Ms. Pagano moves for adjournment, seconded by Mr. Stenit. All those in favor? Aye.